Christine, you're here?
I'm here.
Art? Phyllis?
Yes.
Larry?
Here.
Tony G?
Here.
Tony S. Okay. For those of you unfamiliar with the proceedings before the board, there's an agenda up here on the corner of the table. Each item will be taken in the ordinance on the agenda. The applicant will come up and have described what they want to do. There'll be an opportunity for questions among the board. There's an opportunity for the public to comment, either those people in person, on Zoom, or by phone. If we're ready to begin, is there someone here from Optum?
Yes, sir.
Come on.
My name is Saganis from the Stephen Network. We're the responsible for how we approach this.
Why don't you have a seat and just speak into the microphone? And if you don't mind, take him off your hat. Thanks.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay, so you were here last month, and we had some questions?
Yes.
Right, and I think you've submitted some additional documents?
Correct.
All right, do you want to comment on any of that?
We put together a package for the portrait review. And basically, what we're showing is sightlines from the street to the building, the signages. We are currently looking to replace the existing Caramell signage with the Optum signage. We would like to use the same location as the existing Caramell signage. We already have access, we have electric there. We have the visibility from the street for the pedestrians and anyone coming to the facility to use them. If you go through the package that was submitted, you can see that there's several sightline issues from the street, mostly because of the trees. And there's some issues that would keep people from, as they're approaching the building, to be able to locate the building, safely turn into the parking lot and find it in a reasonable manner.
Okay, and you saw the comments from the county?
We did, yes.
Okay, and do you have any response to those comments?
We don't have any response to those comments other than what we are proposing is basically replacing the existing signage. And we're replacing the existing signage with a new sign for visibility, and it would be at a lesser square footage than the existing. So we do feel that within the parameters that we have currently, the Optum would like to proceed with the set of letters as proposed.
Okay, now, you've provided three different renderings for a three-foot, a four-foot, and a five-foot sign?
Correct.
Are those the only sizes available?
No, we can make them in multiple sizes, but what it comes down to then is a visibility issue. Five-foot would be the optimum size to see it from the ground floor as you're approaching the building. Sizes that are less become harder to read at greater distances. So that's why we stick to the larger set.
So originally, sixty-five and a half, there was a sixty-five and a half foot allowed at that spot? Is that something that's a little bit bigger than your smallest rendering? Is that something you're able to produce?
It can be produced, yes, but it's not what we would prefer due to visibility concerns.
Okay. Christine, you have any questions?
No, no questions.
Art?
I'm going to follow up on yours.
Art, if you could just move your... Sorry, thank you.
The follow-up on Paul's question, the sixty-five square foot, that's the seventeen-seven-three-eighths sign, that's the medium sign?
Which would probably be the four-foot back.
On page eighteen, it looks like.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Phyllis?
I have no questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony G?
No questions.
Tony S?
No questions.
All right, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? There's no one in the audience, is there? Anyone on Zoom? You're on Zoom now, you can unmute yourself. Raise your hand so I can see you. Okay, I don't see anyone else. Art, did you have something else?
Nope.
Okay, I'm not seeing anything else, so I'll close the public hearing. I move to close the public hearing.
Sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And you can wait till the end of the meeting, which may not take too long, or you can call tomorrow morning.
Okay.
All right?
I'll hang up a little bit.
Okay. That brings us to item number two. Seven Boca Court. I'm going to recuse myself on this one. I asked Tony G. if he would take over.
Is anybody here for that application?
Yes.
Want to come forward and state your name to be sworn?
William O'Neill, seven Boca Court, Kipsey, the applicant.
Mr. O'Neill, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Mr. O'Neill, why don't you explain your application?
Well, we've just applied for a variance to build a deck, a twelve-by-sixteen-foot deck at the back of our manufactured home cottage in the Gables. And it's pretty much flat on the ground, it's not very high. It's going to have a railing around it. And, you know, it required a setback, and so we're applying for the difference in what's allowed where we are, seven feet or something like that.
So the deck itself goes no further width any other way, just closer to the back property line, right?
It starts right at the building, right at the sliding glass doors in the bedroom at the back of the cottage. And to the rear of our property is a huge swamp. Nobody lives back there. And somebody from your agency was there the other day to look it over, but it should not infringe on anybody's, you know, reasonable use of their property around us. I wouldn't think...
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Anybody else have any questions?
I think that the Reddles, you know, at the Gables have approved of our plan and application. That was our first level of attack before we came here.
Okay. Questions?
Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
No questions.
And no questions.
No questions.
Is anybody from the public on Zoom? And if you're on Zoom, this would be the time to comment on the application at, this is, seven Boca Court. We're not seeing anybody. So I move to close the public.
Second?
Sure. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Close.
You should vote. You moved, you made a motion?
Vote to close the public, all those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
All right, now, you can wait. You can wait. It probably won't be too long, or you can call tomorrow morning.
I just wanted to note, it warms the applicant's heart to see a former colleague serving the public as you do.
Nice to see you again.
Sorry you recused yourself, I understand.
All right, that brings us to item number three. Twenty-nine South Gate Drive. See Mr. Schneeburger if you want to unmute yourself?
I just sent an ask to unmute to Mr. Schneeburger?
Mr. Schneeburger, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, sir.
Okay, why don't you describe your application?
I'm seeking a variance for my existing shed, which is a ten-by-twelve, and it's on four feet to six feet, and two feet down the floor respectively, with existing shed that I have there on my property.
Okay, and how long has the shed been there?
Been there for a couple of years, sir.
Okay, and based upon the topography of your yard, is it fair to say that right behind the shed, there's a hill?
There isn't, sir.
Okay, and your neighbors similarly have sheds in their backyards?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I don't have any other questions. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony G?
No questions.
Tony S?
No questions.
All right, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience. If there's anyone on Zoom?
Mr. Schneeburger, let me just ask you, were you trying to unmute yourself before and unable to do so? Or was it only when I sent you the request that it worked?
I didn't send the request.
Ah, that's what I was afraid of. All right, so let me just see if Mr... Is one other person on?
I did. I popped back up and then says, you know, I'm unmuted, so I just hit unmute.
Yeah. Okay.
Hi. I'm... I'm with the family lady. So when you create a Zoom meeting, you have an option at the host to... There should be a little checkbox. So as a host, you can automatically unmute anybody?
Yes.
So that's your setting?
Yep, no, I...
So you're going to have to remove the request?
Yes. No, I realize that. I just, I know that they had changed something on the settings at IT. That's why I wanted to make sure. There's a Pat Guinto on. Did you have a comment on this or on any other application?
On this one. I was just trying to get unmuted. I was able to do so.
You were able to do so. Very good. Okay, good.
Okay, not seeing anyone else, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. That brings us to item number four. Valley Christian Church, six fifty-seven Chief Road. All right, if you state your names.
Stephen Tinkelman, Tinkelman Architecture. And to the right of me is Robert Turner from my firm as well.
Stephen and Robert, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
All right, do you want to describe this application?
Thank you. Also on the Zoom is Pat Guinto, who I guess you just spoke to recently. And he is the Vice President and Head of Operations for Erie Materials.
Okay, I see he's unmuted.
I'll swear, huh?
Maybe...
Hang on just a second. Mr. Guinto?
Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
All right, all right, go ahead.
Thank you. On behalf of this application, maybe the right way to start is to have Pat speak a little bit about the company itself, and so you get a sense of who they are and, you know, where they come from and why they're here. Pat?
Okay, good evening. Thank you for the consideration on the project that we're proposing. Erie Materials is a building materials distributor. We distribute exterior building products to remodeling contractors, builders, and general contractors. Primarily exterior roofing products and siding products along with doorwork, windows, and doors. We've been in business since 1973. This is our fiftieth year celebration. And we have nine other facilities across New York State and two in Pennsylvania. And we are looking obviously at this particular facility to open a tenth location. For tonight, I believe we're looking at four different requested variances, which are Mr. Tinkelman and Mr. Turner are going to go through.
Thank you, Pat. So, you know, as mentioned, Erie is Contract Vandy on six fifty-seven Chief Road. You've seen this application before you when we represented Valley Christian, so you're probably a little familiar with the site and all. The... So the church got their approvals, and then business changed, plans changed, and they couldn't go forward with the project. It's a complicated building. You can see from the site that it's a large building. It's pre-existing, it's built in the eighties. Next, if we go to an aerial photograph, you can see in red is the outline of the site itself. It's about 3.6 acres. You have similarly zoned or functioning facilities across the street, which is HD Plumbing. There's Wingate, which is to the south of us, which is real close to our property line, and that's a mixed-use industrial building. And then to the north of us is an apartment complex. That apartment complex is up about thirty-five feet in elevation from the slope of this particular property. Again, on the next slide, you can see our site is located BH. The Wingate property is IL. The industrial piece is OR across the way, but there's other BH. The site next to us that has the apartments was BH, and there was a request for a zone change for that particular project. The next couple of slides are photographs of the existing facility, give you an idea of the condition of both, you know, the building and the site. It's a challenging building. It's appropriate adaptable reuse of the structure, maybe more so than it was for a church. And then you can also see from the back of the site that it's pretty rough and undeveloped back there currently. So the project, the project that before you, we've been in front of the planning board, and we've worked very carefully with both the planning board and the staff and the town, different departments. And we're at the point where we have received a negative deck on the secret process, and then we're here to make our case before you. The ordinance allows, you know, about, for the outdoor usage, twenty-five percent of the site, which would be about thirty-nine thousand five hundred square feet, we're actually proposing about three thousand less than that for the use. It's in the lighter colored area that that would be distinguished and indicated for the outdoor storage. What's interesting about the site is how complicated it is to utilize it because of the significant drop in grade. So from the front and the back of the site, you know, there's a drop of about twenty-five to thirty feet. So it's, you can see that that creates some planning challenges. Next to the building where it says loading dock, there's a retaining wall. And that retaining wall, if you can read it, and I'm sorry if it's a little small, that retaining wall is about sixteen feet high in spots. But that's how you can make, that's how we found it necessary to make the site work, and so that the outdoor storage area could be relatively flat. So again, I think what's interesting about the site is that through careful planning, we could make the site work, but it only works with, in fact, the variances that we're asking for tonight. And so we are hopeful that you'll consider our request before you. The four variances in front of you, you know, one has to do with the side yard setbacks. These variances were granted from the last application because it's a pre-existing non-conforming matter for the most part, but I'll explain that in a second. On the top, on the northern spot of the site, there is, I guess it was determined that we didn't need a variance there. Maybe, Chrissy, if that's wrong in terms of...
No, that's correct. I mean, it's not, there's no impact on that side.
Yeah. And the same thing would hold true on the southern part of the site, but we're adding in the lighter blue a loading dock, a loading deck area that is covered, so that when your materials are coming in and out of the building, they can deal with the inclement weather and all that. That addition does not get closer to the... It's actually a foot behind the, you know, the face of the building on the south side, so we're not exceeding the setback requirement there. And so that was carefully, you know, considered, and it was considered given where we would need to put overhead doors and make the floor plan work on the inside. So that's variance number one. Again, we don't think that this impacts the character of the neighborhood. Again, there's a rectangular shape. It's a black line to the south of this side of the building, and that's this other industrial use that is our adjacent neighbor. The second variance is a little bit more complex. The site, in order for it to work, you know, requires an interesting balance of, you know, having an outdoor storage area that wants to be blacktopped so that their materials can come and go in a clean, efficient way. So the site is essentially going to be blacktopped. We have screening on the rear of the site and about four hundred feet to the, I guess it would, if I can just use left, but that would be, let's see if I can figure this out again. So that would be the west of the site. There's an apartment complex that we'll show you. It's four hundred feet away, but its elevation is considerably less than, you know, the elevation of this site. And there's a berm here, that twenty feet along the back. There's technically a berm there that we've been working with the planning board to stay completely outside of that. So there's, in essence, we're screening that residential use from that regard. We also have an eight-foot-high fence around the entire property, so that, you know, we're meeting the requirements of the ordinance in that regard at all. What becomes tricky is that the site is smaller than normally what Erie uses. And we have a little bit of information that we'll prepare to you. But part of it is that you have large trucks that are coming in, and they need movement. And because of the slope on the site, you have to create some extra macadam to get all the trucks to work effectively. And so that's where, you know, between that, the coverage of the building and the parking in the front, you end up hitting your eighty percent. Seventy-five percent is allowed, so there's about seven thousand square feet or five percent of the site that we're asking for macadam. We've had, what's interesting is that your ordinance talks about, you know, the idea that the surface is impervious, and that's been the determination from, you know, the zoning staff. We had offered to the planning board to actually put some of the blacktop areas into porous asphalt, so that technically it would be impervious. And we're still willing to do that. And so we would meet the ordinance of the seventy-five, you know, the requirement of not to exceed the seventy-five percent. But we're asking for the variance, just, you know, and we'd go either way. If you gave us the variance and didn't require us to do the porous pavement, we would just build it out, but we would...
Where would you do that? Where would you make that change?
Probably in the lowest, in the areas that are not used as much, probably the parking down below. So, you know, if the wear and tear is less on the porous pavement. Did planning have any comments about that?
I mean, generally, we'd be supportive. The planning board would be supportive of that, but we, again, it didn't change necessarily the need for the variance based on the interpretation. So we, they're getting, they're asking for the full amount.
But we'd make a commitment to work that through with the planning board, and if the planning board, you know, was comfortable with it, we would, you know, we would pursue that. And if they weren't, then at least we had the variance from this board. How effective is that? As...
I mean...
Impervious.
Yeah, it depends on how well it's maintained and how well it's done in the initial installation. I mean, the good thing is if you're not in an area that's highly trafficked, like the area that Steve was suggesting at the bottom of the hill, you know, it could serve its purpose, but...
We've used the porous pavement on projects, and I think what Mike is saying is absolutely true, is that if the owner of the property doesn't vacuum it and, you know, follow the protocols of keeping it so that it still drains. So I think that that's, you know, that's important. But from a visual point of view, we have, you know, landscaping along the front. Because of the site movement, the grade changes and such, you can see in the front of the building there's some odd lines that look like ramps and such. And the only way we can, you know, normally you'd landscape in front of the building, so you'd get closer to your eighty percent. But the building currently isn't handicap accessible on any side, and you can't operate a retail business. The law also doesn't allow you to do that now, so... So there's a bunch of issues, "bunch" is a funny term, that begin to put pressure on this particular site. And, you know, Erie's a, you know, a company that, when we've looked at their sites to learn their business, we've been amazed at how organized and neat they are, and, you know, and, you know, the, and we see the same thing with the plans for the building itself. The building is rough, and, you know, the code issues are complicated. And so they've been able, or I should say, we've been able to work with them carefully to try to make this work. And that leads into the third variance, which has to do with parking. And I know that you've dealt with some of these parking issues with uses that don't really require, like, mini-storage or something like that. And what we thought was, and this is key to making this project work, is that the yard that we're creating of thirty-six thousand square feet for Erie is going to require them to operate this on a higher, on a higher focus level in terms of the site being organized, because they like bigger outdoor areas. But they can make this work through the way the geometries and how their materials come and go in different seasons. But, you know, part of it is that we've studied, and I think we have... We have a list here that shows, and we picked five of their other sites, and they're all in the same range of how many parking spaces they successfully operate their buildings. And you can see they run from forty-two down to twenty-five. The average is lower than what we're offering to provide, which is thirty-seven. And that came from an analysis of, which we've worked on with, you know, with the staff, of, you know, how many employees that have their retail customers, and then have a factor in there for error, so that there is a comfortable level of parking. A lot of their business is really done through the computer. You know, somebody's going to order material, and they, you know, and they just, it's ordered that way, and it's delivered. So there's not, it's not a huge retail operation. The showroom that we're looking at is somewhere between thirty-five hundred and four thousand square feet, which is, you know, in their average range for their showroom. So they run their businesses, you know, if we had to put a hundred parking spaces in here, we would still have the same issue with the impervious, but we couldn't create the appropriate yard in the back. So it sort of becomes important for this project to move forward to, you know, be able to, you know, have the thirty-six thousand-plus square feet for the yard itself. And again, the request of the variances is a hundred and some odd spaces. It's mathematically, you know, not insignificant, but for this particular function, it really works well. And then the last, the last variance request has to do with a dumpster location. We're showing this dumpster, if you could show me. The dumpster is on the southwest corner of the site. There is a, there's one residential site. You can see that there's an indicator of fifty feet. And if you could show that. So there's a single-family home that is fifty-one feet from the, or fifty-one feet from their property line. So that's the requirement, is fifty feet. In the other direction, we're showing only thirty-three feet. And again, that's showing the multifamily that's back there. That's about four hundred feet away. So, you know, again, because of the grade changes, the facts that we're not only creating the screening around the entire site, but we're also screening the trash corral itself. So it seems like it's a, you know, the issue of it having an impact on that larger project in the back is really impossible. You can see the site section here, and with the cursor, if you could show where the buildings are... are, but it's, it's a wetland area, it's, it's overgrown, it'll never be built in there because of its wetland, you know, it's, it's the wetland requirements and such. And you can begin to see also that, you know, where our outdoor storage, there's a three-sided shed building that we have on the site and that almost acts as a, a second fence on the site. So we feel that the screening is, is substantial in that regard. So those are the, the four variances. Again, the, the point being is that we don't feel that there's, in terms of the tests that are, that, that you have to address, you know, the, the neighborhood is not, and the character of it is, this is owned right, it's as a right use. Our, the, you know, we've looked at the, you know, alternative plans and have felt that this is the best we can do in terms of making it work and to be functional and thoughtful and to have some green around the perimeters and such. And we don't think the variances are substantial other than that number of parking spaces and the project itself won't have any adverse impact on, on the neighborhood environmentally and I think that's where we got the, the neg deck from the planning board. So I hope that that's helpful.
Can you tell me what kind of trash you think they'll be generating and how much?
Pat, can you address that?
Sure. Excuse me. Typically, we would have a, a cardboard, you know, 30-yard dumpster as well as a trash dumpster. Trash dumpster is, is, you know, leftover stuff from the, from the office space, you know, which could be, a good chunk of it could be just papers and things of that nature as well as, you know, leftover lunch garbage and that kind of thing. So your typical, your typical office type of trash. In terms of the operation, we have a lot, we have a lot of cardboard and a lot of plastic and banding, those kind of things that could get opened and, and then thrown away as it's, it's trash. So we, we would pick up probably once a week of a 30-yard dumpster and probably twice a week of a cardboard dumpster. So that's typically what we would generate.
Okay. That's all I have. Did you have anything else that you wanted to?
No, thank you.
Okay. Christine, do you have any questions?
No, you were very, very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I do have a couple. As far as the deliveries and the moving around, you can use tractor trailers and our forklifts.
Yes.
Gas-powered forklifts.
Yes.
Electric or gas?
Propane.
Propane. So they're fairly quiet, okay. The hours of operation with time, what are your typical hours?
They're, they're within the requirements of the town, so, I mean, that's a requirement, so.
Okay, and, okay. And the fence is going to be solid fence around the property or a wire chain link fence?
We were using a chain link fence with the slats in there so that.
So, okay.
Yes.
Okay. I'm in favor of the porous pavement, by the way. So the screening, again, you showed a lot of trees, will they be evergreen trees or are you going to use?
In the back.
Yeah, so they'll be green at all times of the year?
The, the trees on the, on the west side of the property are more or less maples. I mean, they will lose their lease in the, in the wintertime. I know the adjoining property, which has the apartments on it that is to the east, they planted several evergreens all along the, the property line. So those will become, you know, get larger white pines. And then on the east side, we have deciduous trees as well.
I guess the other question, point on that, because it's a good question, is the, the floor level of the, the apartments are down about 15 feet and then, so, you know, given that elevation and the fact we have an eight-foot-high fence, you have about 250 feet of wetland that's planted and overgrown.
Between you and them.
Will always be that way.
Okay. And I think the last question I have right now, your trash, your, your cardboard, typically people use compactors to squeeze all they can into a dumpster, but you'd be using a compactor that, so you won't have that noise generator, okay?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Phyllis?
If you could talk a little bit about how you're going to address the rainwater? If, if everything is pavement and, you know, where's the water going when it rains?
Right. We have underground galleys that are part of the plan so that, you know, the, it's a very similar system that was approved the last time for the Valley Christian Church because there's only a little bit more macadam in this, in this plan. It would change if we get into some of the pervious, you know, in terms of how it's designed, but right now it's through chambers and it will, you know, meet all the requirements of the D E C and all that, so. It's, it's, Pajee Engineering has designed it for us and the review process is going strong with the planning board.
Yeah, I did want to point out the CPL, our engineers for the planning board has reviewed a draft SWIP that was prepared for the project. So I mean, there's, you know, it's all been looked at very carefully and will be before it's finally approved in any case, but it's a good question.
And then, out of concern for that one house that's in the back by the trash, is that, is trash pickup something that you can schedule so that it's not disruptive? You know, that, I know you got to pick up trash when you pick up trash, but they're not coming at six o'clock in the morning. I mean, can that be something that was?
No.
Right. That can be, that can, Pat, did you want to answer that?
Yeah, I was just going to say typically that's middle of, we usually have middle-of-the-day pickups for our trash. We don't, you know, our, our general business hours start 7:30 to 4:30, or they're 7:30 to 4:30 and I would say our trash pickups are usually sometime between 10 and 2.
Also, if you look at the map, it's, the house is way down near Camelot, the, the road, it's right down here, and the rest of it is their backyard. So it's a considerable, you know, it's like 200 to 300 feet from where the dumpster is to get to their house.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Okay. Larry?
No questions.
Tony G.
I know you guys have been equally as thorough.
Tony has.
Yeah, a couple of things. Looking at your materials that you submitted, there were a couple of questions that I had. One of them was, there's a reference to using wide-bodied trucks for some of your deliveries and it sounds like all your deliveries are like solid, solid objects, right? We're talking about probably siding, roofing, windows and doors. So I'm kind of curious why the wide-body trucks, since you're not hauling bulk material, right? You're not hauling stone or, or sand or anything like that, right?
Right. Pat, do you want to answer that? Did we misspeak in the?
Yeah, I think you missedpoke because we don't, we don't really have any wide-body. I mean, ours are typical 100 or 2-inch-wide bed truck. They're, they're either drive-through bands, you know, as you indicated, to, to serve the window and door millwork delivery, and then curtain-sided or flatbed trucks for the, the delivery, roofing and siding.
Okay. Related to that, in the same area of one of your documents where you talked about the wide-body trucks, you had indicated that you were going to widen the portion of sheaf road to accommodate these vehicles and I was curious as to how you were going to widen it.
We weren't going to widen sheaf road, it's the.
Well, it's in your, it's in your stuff, that's all I could say.
I think, I think the, what we were, what we were describing there, sir, was that the, the existing curb cut for the site works better if the throat is, is wider so that the trucks can make the movement around the building.
So you're referring to the width of your driveway, basically?
Yes, yes.
All right, okay.
Yeah, so the road itself doesn't get wider.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? I don't, I don't see anyone in the audience. Anyone on, in Zoom? All right, I'm not seeing any indication. Go ahead.
I've got one more question, sorry. If your trucks get there before the store opens, they're not going to sit in there idling, right, all, all morning?
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have traffic restriction at the, at the gate so they can't come into the property.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Then we can go to item number one for deliberation. At this point, there's no further comment or evidence taken and we're just going to deliberate about what we're going to do. So. So anybody, I'm optum, anybody have any concerns about the height of the signs? You know, we approved them some years ago. Tony, you, you looking?
No, I, I, I mean, I read all the material and I read Mike's report and the reference to the earlier thing about how that got approved even though, even though the regs got changed. So my only concern is that, you know, I think they were looking for what, 141 square feet were one of their options.
Let's talk just about the height first.
Yeah, the height, well, the height of the, oh, the height off the ground?
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's kind of like, it, it, it's existing at this point, right? It's not a new condition, it's been that way for a few years.
Right.
I don't think we can, I don't think we can say too much about it other than the fact that it's, it's been allowed to exist.
Okay. So the variances are for, for a couple of things. One, two variances for the fact that they're above the second floor. So the height, does anybody have any concern with the height?
No.
No, okay. Then one variance is for an additional sign. So two, one's allowed, but they want an additional one that's consistent with what's there now. Does anybody have any concern about that?
No.
All right. So then the last thing really is the size of the signs. So they, they provided three different renderings. There's a 50-foot one, a 90-foot one and a 140-foot, square foot one. We, the original variance, I think, was for 65 and a half feet, which, would that have been CRM or would that have, do you remember? Well, was there one for, I don't remember we, they came in, CRM came in for a variance.
The variance was for prior use, prior to Caremount.
Mount Kiskel Medical Group was the original, right?
Yes, this one, this was for Caremount in 2016.
Right, but there was, I thought CRM was the first one.
When the building went up.
Yep. Yeah. Well, in any case, does anybody think, anyone in favor of the 141-foot one?
No.
No.
Okay. Does anybody have a problem with 65 and a half that we approved the first time?
No, I think that would be fine, plus the, in my opinion, the, the sign is orange, so it really stands out. So if you have, you know, the two signs, everybody already knows what it is, it's just a change of name. It's up high, you can see it.
Okay. And the county didn't, would vote to deny or indicated they wanted to deny the variance for the size of the sign, so if we were to grant their variance, we just have to have a supermajority, so. Anybody want to limit it to the smallest sign that they provided or to the 65 and a half feet that we originally granted?
I think 65. I'm with the 65.
65? Everyone's good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are they, are they also on the sign, on the?
Yeah, there's, there's, oh, there's a lot of ground level signage.
Signs all over.
All right. Then I would make this motion. So is it fair that variances one, two and three are the, is the additional sign and the two signs above the second floor? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, then I would move, at least this is one motion or two motions? Doesn't matter? Okay. And I, I would move to approve the variances in item one for variances one, two and three, but limit the variances in four and five to 65 and a half feet, square feet each. This is based upon our site visits, testimony of the applicant and the staff reports.
So just so I'm clear, they would normally be allowed one 100-foot sign, so you're allowed to have a total of two, two signs that would total 65, 120, 130, 131 square feet.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
A second here.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any moes, opposed? Then that motion carries.
Did we need to do a dec for that?
Oh, that's true.
Oh, yeah, we did, sorry.
I move that the Z B A determine that there are no other involved agencies and declare itself to be the lead agency for the action, and I move that the Z B A determine the action would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment and issuing negative declaration. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries.
I didn't say any, no. Yeah, this one?
And who was the second on the motion for the sign approval? Was that our, or Christine?
Christine.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item number two, which I have recused myself on, so Tony, if you would take over.
Okay. So for item number two, we have the addition of a deck, which means the variance for the back lot line. We do have findings. Is there any discussion on this item? It's pretty straightforward.
We don't have, we don't have findings.
Recommendation? We don't have a recommendation.
I want to read those.
You got to read them.
Okay. Is there any discussion first, though, right?
Typically, I offer my findings and then people can make any suggestions to that.
Okay. So I offer these findings based on the application, whether an undesirable change will be produced by, to the character of the neighborhood or the detriment of nearby properties created by granting this variance. It's a new development with similar decks nearby. Whether the benefits sought to the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other area variances based on the lot size, no other variances, alternatives seem to apply. Whether the request for an area variance is substantial, neither numerical nor practical. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district, no evidence to any of that impact. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created shall be considered in the decision of the Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude from granting the area variance. Yes, but this is not a reason to deny, and I offer these findings. Second. Is there any discussion from the board?
Do you want me to make the motion for the?
Sure.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number two. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the.
Acting chair.
Second.
As you say, all those in favor?
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those.
And opposed to our recusals, our recusals, so the vote being 6-0-1.
Any?
One refusal, yes.
One refusal.
All right, thank you very much.
And this motion is carried.
That brings us to item number three. 29 South Gate, this is for a shed, an existing shed. Anybody have any concerns about that? All right. So let me offer these findings, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. The shed has been there for several years, it's consistent with other properties in the neighborhood, and whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance based upon the topography of, of the backyard. It's impossible to have it, for the applicant to obtain the desired result without an area variance. And whether the requested variance is substantial, perhaps numerically, but not in any impact based upon, again, the topography of the, of the lot, and whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district. There's no evidence that will be any impact on the physical or environmental. that will be any impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And while this problem was self-created, that's not a reason to deny the, the application. And I offer those findings. Art, you might, Art, do you mind making a motion?
No, of course not. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item three. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and the bill, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts those findings as set forth by the chair.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number four. Valley Christian Church, 657 Sheaf Road. There is a, a staff report on this. Does anybody have any concerns about that?
I think they've covered most of the questions.
Yeah, I, I think this is a repurposing, a, you know, reuse of the, of an abandoned property.
It would nice, be nice to see that.
Yeah.
Draw it back.
Become productive, yes. Okay. Phyllis, do you mind making this motion?
Not at all. I move that the board approve the request for the area variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearings and the results of site visits, as well as staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings.
It was a staff report.
In the staff report. Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. This, there's one other item. Actually, there's two other items. There's a request by the planning board to be lead agency for site plan and special use permit, 68 Van Wagoner Road. Does anybody have any concerns about this? Mike, you just want to describe what the application is, what their plan is?
Yeah, there's a, it's an existing building, has three apartments on the top floor, and it was previously a, a golf cart repair facility. And now there's someone who's looking to do a, well, motor vehicle repair. They, they want to do some bodywork, but they do have a, they're now proposing a paint shed, like outside of the building that's contained and catches the exhaust and so forth. So it's, it's moving along. It's a complicated, a little bit of a complicated project, but the planning board is reviewing it and just wanted to get lead agency.
All right. Anybody have any concerns about this? Then I move that we grant planning board lead agency status on 68 Van Wagoner Road. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And finally, I won't be available for next month's meeting, so I'm going to appoint Tony G. as the acting chairperson. If any, so long as no one has any objections. Anybody rushing to take that spot? All right. And Lisa, I don't need a motion on that, do I? Okay. But I will move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? That motion carries. Good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye, everybody. Good night.